Recommendations, for instance, the eighth grade field trip needs a recommendation from the superintendent of schools. And why wasn't this meeting rescheduled to a night?
It is November 8th, 2012. It is 7:25 and I am calling the meeting of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District to order. Please stand for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda, introduction of members.
I'm Steve Tringali from Millville.
Erin Vinoco, Millville.
Jessica Saintamont, Blackstone.
Anna Francesa, Blackstone.
Kathy Robinson, Millville.
Wendy Greenstein, Blackstone.
Mike Buckley, Blackstone.
Jane Robin, Blackstone.
Justin Cameron.
And Mr. Cameron is sitting in for the superintendent who is away. First on the agenda is the consent agenda, the warrants, the use of school facilities, field trips, and minutes.
Point of order, Madam Chairman.
Absolutely, Mr. Buckler.
May the record show that the superintendent of schools is not in attendance, so therefore will not be able to make any recommendations this evening. And I do reserve my concerns about holding this meeting without the superintendent present.
So noted. Consent agenda, again, warrants, school, use of school facilities, field trips, and minutes. And I'd be looking for a motion to accept, at least for discussion purposes.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Tringali.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Robinson. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. I'd be looking for a vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed.
Nay.
One nay. Okay, public forum. No public forum tonight. Student report.
The volleyball team has finished their season. They had their banquet last week and they had a really good season for a starting team. Winter sports are starting up and basketball tryouts are in two weeks. And at the end of tryouts, they have a hoop night and a lot of the seniors are looking forward to that. SAD has, they completed their presentation about Halloween safety at AFM and the principal really loved their presentation. Student council has started a Support the Troops fundraiser and students are asked to bring in canned goods and toiletries to support the troops. NHS sponsored a Character Counts Month during October and they combined this with a student advisory program. And each of the advisory groups had to, they had a pillar of good character and they decorated their doors and they had a door decorating contest.
Football is five and three. The last game is tomorrow night against Smithfield, in Smithfield at 7:00 PM, which is a varsity game. Marching band will be performing at MetLife Stadium in East Rutherford, New Jersey this weekend for the U.S. bands' national championships. At MICA finals, we received five stars in all categories and overall five stars. And at the New England's Classics Band Association finals, we received second place. Winter sports meeting was held tonight, so winter sports will be starting soon. And the week after jazz, after marching band is done, jazz bands will be starting up.
Any questions for our students?
No, I would have to say I couldn't thank you enough for supporting the troops. My son is serving out of Afghanistan and I'll get you his address. I couldn't be any more proud of him. He's also graduated from BMR, so, thank you and I'll get you his address. Jacob.
Oh, Jacob, okay.
Yep, he's a proud Marine.
Okay. Moving on to the agenda, request for approval, Washington DC trip, eighth grade students. Mr. Cameron can speak on this.
Thank you.
We did bring it up the last time and we had given approval to move forward so that Mr. Cameron could have his introductory or informational meeting with the parents, so... Where are we at, Mr. Cameron? Did you have the meeting with them?
I actually did not. I was under the, well, I didn't want to move forward, I wanted to respect the process. And with the hurricane tropical storm coming in, you know, I kind of lost a couple days anyways. So I felt it necessary just to get final approval from this committee and move forward with potentially a student meeting on Monday during their lunch. And then potentially a meeting on the district-wide half-day, parent meeting, the district-wide half-day next Thursday, potentially.
Okay, and I think the idea of having Mr. Cameron come in was, I think people are, to my knowledge, all set with the trip, but if we had questions, we wanted to ask you, them. So committee people, I don't want to hold up the trip. I think it's a wonderful idea and wonderful experience, so...
Thank you.
Does any committee member have?
Did everybody receive this packet at the last meeting? Okay.
Okay, I would be looking for a motion, at least for discussion purposes.
I think we've already approved this.
Did we need any other approvals?
I think they wanted us to, Mr. Cameron, I think it was waiting approval because people had questions. That's my memory of it.
It was shared with me like a preapproval, if there's such a thing.
Right.
Yeah, because it wasn't on the agenda, so we didn't feel that we could approve it, but we...
Show intention to accept the proposal on page three of your, four of your minutes. Moved by Mrs. Robinson, seconded by Mr. Faulkner. Any animus to show intention to accept the proposal to Washington DC and place it on the agenda for the eighth for acceptance.
Does anyone have questions? I think one of the biggest questions was the timing, the time of year.
Yeah, I was just wondering, I know it's usually at the end of the year, but I was just wondering why so late at the end of the year. I just see that potential for eighth grade students at the end of the year. It's, is it eighth grade? Yeah, eighth grade. I'm just wondering why the second to the last week.
There's a quick answer, and then there are a few pros to having it so late. The quick answer is to give community members and parents of eighth graders as much time as possible to save up for the trip. You know, this is hopefully going to start a tradition where the current seventh grade class, you know, can start hopefully saving up now, if you think about it. And a lot of other districts and a lot of other middle schools who do travel as an eighth grade have an opportunity to do that. You know, I know some parents in the district that I used to help bring the eighth grade to, the students used to get summer jobs to help pay for the trip. You know, in our eighth grade, current eighth grade doesn't have that, nor do the parents. So that's the quick answer. It does provide a couple pros, one of them being it is something that keeps them close and connected to the culture. You know, not necessarily something over their head, but a motivator for them if it's towards the end of the year. And the liaison that I'm working with also shared that, you know, if you are going down for the first time, there's less crowds at that time of year. Many schools in the South aren't even in school anymore.
Right, yeah.
So, you know, might be an opportunity to kind of work it out. Long-term, not that late.
Okay.
So this year's seventh grade, if we go ahead and get approval from this committee to go next year, we wouldn't be looking so late in the year.
I would imagine it'd give you that much more time for fundraisers and things like that, the further out it is.
Absolutely.
Is it coinciding with their curriculum for this year? Or is it, is there a timing thing that way?
It's, I think, a fantastic springboard for American history in high school. And, you know, my next step after, you know, following the process is connecting with the high school. Because the, you know, there's pros and cons to the end of the year. One of the pros, again, is you keep them close to the culture and you have a motivator. One of the cons is a trip in the beginning of the year, which for 10 years, I helped lead a trip to Stone Environmental Camp, which is up in New Hampshire, in the beginning of the year. And then three weeks later, I would make a trip with the eighth grade down to DC. Wonderful bonding moment in the beginning of the year. So, love to reach out to the high school principal and see what staff, especially freshman staff, might be able to come as chaperones on this trip. And that might provide them an opportunity to connect with the curriculum, but also connect with the students, you know, that hopefully they'll have just, you know, 75 days later.
And is it limited to a certain amount of chaperones, or are you opening it to parents or families that want to participate?
The, it all depends on the numbers, because certainly buses can only hold a certain amount of number. And the numbers are a little tricky, because we don't want to spell over, you know, have 12 people on a third bus. Because this price is kind of fixed, you know, to have full buses. Certainly if parents wanted to travel on their own, you know, the trip I helped lead for about, you know, nine years, we actually, you know, we were fine with that and we thought that was wonderful. Could be interesting, you know, I think it's a different philosophy to see how many, you know, family members do want to join us. And whether or not they're with us the entire trip, or we have some family time scheduled, you know, on the trip.
You're open to that?
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
Similar thing, do you have like a date where the kids have to commit by? And there's like a minimum or maximum of people you need in order to run it?
The minimum is what a, well, the minimum, I believe, is, believe it or not, just 15. And that would be one bus. That's not ideal for the company. And certainly, you know, and, I'm sorry, what was I saying?
Is there, like, a date the kids have to commit, whether they can or cannot go?
That, I'm in negotiation to push out, push further out as best as possible, trying to, again, stay sensitive, you know, to communities, to families in this economy who have been hit hard. So that date right now is, again, I'm kind of negotiating with my liaison to push that out. I do believe, you know, they do look for, and might offer, even offer a $50 discount if people commit pretty much right away and they're able to choose like a budget plan. You know, they can go right online and choose to pay, you know, $87 for the next seven months. If they do, if they go ahead and commit that way, then it will be recommended that they pay, I think, $75 extra for cancellation insurance.
Now, what happens if somebody can't afford the trip?
That's why if you, on the notes here, we were able to organize and run what we called activity camps last year, where we invited the younger population of the district into the school. It was, it was really for a purpose of the fourth and fifth graders to become familiar and comfortable in this building. All we asked was for a donation. At that time, it was for an after-school program, which was, you know, very early. And it ran very popular, very popular. You know, I think February vacation, you know, we were able to get about $2,800 for our PTO. So if something like that happens again, and, you know, I think it will, we're able to take, you know, $2,800 and offer like $300 scholarships, you know, for the students who apply, that might be on like free and reduced lunch.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
In your past history, how has that gone? You said you ran a similar trip in the past. Were there a lot of families that basically needed a scholarship, or?
Well, sort of apples and oranges. That district was a very affluent, or those communities, a very affluent community. The economy was probably a little different as well. So, again, it's hard to compare. The numbers, almost everything is identical. In fact, I think when I first shared this trip with all of you, I did say I could, you know, bring them here, but the only difference was, you know, the, you know, the social economics of it.
Any other questions? I just, I had a question on the, if there were going to be restrictions for students based behavior academic-wise, on who could attend?
There is, you mean, from like the point that we share, it's a go to the point we leave?
Right.
Okay. Because there's another question about behavioral expectations and they do sign a contract, behavioral contracts, to go.
Okay.
And if they compromise that on the trip, then there is legality in legal paperwork that says their parents have to make arrangement for them to leave. In fact, and I know, I'm not answering your question, but I think it was probably 2003 when I hopped on a red-eye with a young lady who made just a very bad choice. And, you know, I do believe her parents had to pay for that whole thing. From now until we go, there is nothing in place, but that's a conversation that the eighth grade teachers are looking to have as well with me.
Well, I do have a concern about, years ago, there was a, the eighth grade field trip that had homework restrictions on it and things like that. And it was, just seemed to be that in the end, a third of the class was excluded from going. And to me, that's, that's an academic field trip, that's not a class field trip. So I have concerns about excluding a good chunk of kids for whatever reason, so...
I agree. And as much as you try to make it objective, especially when it comes to behaviors and discipline, you know, even if you go through the due diligence, you know, and go through the due process and find guilt, it still can be, you're in muddy waters there. You know, I would argue that, you know, if a parent, you know, said to me, you know, in the parent meeting, you know, what about some students who, you know, we think are going to cause problems on the trip? You know, I'll be very candid and say, well, those are the students I'm looking forward to the most, going and seeing success in a trip like this. Because we've seen, I've seen it happen. Because even though the social and economics were different in the town that I went with nine years, we certainly had at-risk students who traveled with us. And I got to tell you, it was the highlight. It was the highlight of their three years in middle school. And, you know, not to stereotype for a moment, but usually those students are students who never get such opportunities in their family lives.
Well, I'm less concerned about behavioral issues, because those can be dealt with, but, you know, when you exclude a third of the class because they didn't do their homework.
Oh, yeah, that would never happen.
That's my concern, but if there's a real behavioral issue where you're not sure you can trust a kid once they're on the trip, that's one thing, but, you know, you didn't do your homework.
Eighth grade teachers have never approached me with, you know, any academic, you know, if they don't reach or, you know, a certain GPA or anything like that. They have asked to have a discussion about behavior and, for lack of a better word, or words, what can we kind of hold over them? You know, and I don't look at it as, you know, don't do this, or here you go again, you're going to lose the trip. Just, you know, here, here are some leadership opportunities. This is an opportunity for you to step up and, you know, really see success in the eighth grade year. And you can tie academics into that. So I think the motivating piece is with the positive and not with, you're going to lose the trip, you're going to lose the trip.
Well, were there guidelines that were followed for the Six Flags? Because that is what this is replacing, correct?
Yeah, if, you know, it just was the one year.
It wasn't a reward?
Nope.
It was a class field trip?
Correct.
So this is going to be handled the same?
Correct. And I guess, you know, to be clear, there won't be Six Flags this year for the eighth grade.
Right.
So to answer your question, no, there weren't any restrictions, either academic or behavior, for Six Flags.
Any other questions?
I wish you well. I think it's a great opportunity for all the children and I'm sure that, hopefully something that will start as a tradition here.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron.
Thanks for bringing it forward.
What's the involvement of the teachers? Will they be attending? If they don't attend, what will they be doing when they're back? What is their problem in this whole thing?
Right now, I have not officially asked them if they're attending or if they're going to commit. It does seem like there's great interest there. And if they don't attend, then certainly they will be back with the students who also aren't attending. I'm hoping that's a minority and it's, you know, going to be business as usual.
So business as usual for the kids that aren't going for one reason or another?
Well, I would say, let me, let me clarify that. I don't see it as a typical school day. And not that I want to discount school days in June, but I think it is an opportunity for them, you know, to really find a way to celebrate their year in a different way but here. I was talking about, for the faculty, it would be business as usual, like waking up and coming here at, you know, 7:45. Whereas if all of you have gone on trips like this, you know, you're on 24/7. So for the students, no, absolutely not. In fact, I would like to, you know, maybe look at an alternative trip for them that would just be during the day.
There is a motion on the table in a second. We'll call for a vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I appreciate your efforts and your endeavors putting this trip together. I know it's not easy.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
We'll see you afterwards, you'll be exhausted and...
Ready for some of vacation.
Appointment of two committee members to serve on the support staff sick bank committee. I know that this, I'm not sure when they need to start this, but I actually have some questions on this. And so I don't, you know, if somebody wants to table this for the next meeting, it probably would be appropriate. I'm not sure if they're looking for people to meet during the day. If they're looking for people, how many meetings this is going to be and...
I'll give you what I know of it. It typically is just two members, the sick bank committee is made up of two members from the bargaining unit, two from the committee, and the superintendent of schools is the ex officio, the chair. And they would only get together when and if they had the need for someone that needed sick time, like they've exhausted all of their time, say they have an illness or an accident or something like that, and they have no time left, then they would come back and ask for access to the sick bank. And it can only be given out in like 20-day increments or 30 calendar days, which is about 20 working days at any time. So typically, we have had very, very few times that we've had to have a meeting. And they usually would have it like 10 minutes before the regular school committee meeting because, whatever, so that's typically how they handle it. It's just been recently that they've kind of had formality, actually had people appointed to it. Many times, you know, if you were early to the meeting, you were it, so. So I don't think it's an awful lot of thing. You're probably shown a confidential letter about what's going on. They held an executive session and it's usually a vote, you know, I and A, and you move on. So it's not an awful lot of...
I do remember in the past, there were members, I remember Anne Lessman and a few more, assigned to that. Were there members assigned to it who want to get off, or just do we need extra members on it?
I think the last, I do remember Anne being on it, and I don't think anybody was appointed.
Probably had, maybe there's a need, no.
And there, I don't think there was a need, but I think there's, there's drawing to a need. And so she wanted to get two members appointed. And I guess, again, if we're not comfortable doing it, we can table it. If, if anybody has an interest sitting on this committee, you know...
I can do it.
No, we can't.
Afternoons or before the meeting, it's just if we move to another night, I'm kind of tight with other meetings, but...
I would be interested too.
And Erin. Okay, I would be looking for a motion to appoint Kathy Robinson and Erin Vinoco to the sick, support staff sick bank committee.
I'll make that motion, sorry.
Motion by Mr. Tringali.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Greenstein to appoint Kathy Robinson and Erin Vinoco to the support staff sick bank committee. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
And I'll just record, it's not voting, Monique.
Report of subcommittees.
Do people want to table that in the interest of...
We can table that. I don't know what's, if there's that much going on. I know the regional agreement, you guys were working on some stuff, but I guess I'd ask, why don't we... We'll hop over the, the subcommittees.
I'll make a motion that we table that till the next meeting.
Well, I was going to say, anybody want to bring something up during committee forum for any of those, just for discussion purposes?
I'll just make a motion that we table number seven, report of subcommittees, until the next school committee meeting.
Okay. Motion by Mrs. Robinson, second to table the report of subcommittees to the next meeting. Public forum.
Do they call for a vote on that, right?
Oh, sorry. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public forum, still no public forum. Committee forum, just one lone, but... There's our little cheerleader back there. Committee forum, anybody?
Nothing new, sorry.
Mrs. Vinoco.
I have nothing.
Robinson, Mrs. Greenstein.
You know, one thing, and this would have been for the superintendent, actually, so I'll just bring it up in the public session. We received a letter in our packet from, from the superintendent of schools to Richard Sitnick and a gentleman, and Maury Wolf regarding the MSBA work being done for the high school roof, I believe, or probably for both roofs. And I'm just a little concerned, and I would have liked an update, because our next meeting on the schedule isn't until the 13th of December, so on 12, 13, 12, which you should go play that in the lottery. But I'm just concerned in whether or not the, if there was any feedback, if there was anything back from this regarding the design documents to the MSBA for the December 6th meeting, and it's a firm date, and I just was wondering if, well, I really can't ask because I don't have anyone here probably that can answer that, as to, you know, are we still on track? And are we going to hit that December meeting? And I'm sure that the folks in Blackstone are concerned about that as well with the Kennedy roof, especially if we have, if this winter that we're entering into, it keeps up its reputation over the last 10 days. It's going to be an interesting stretch. But I would like to just, if someone could just jot that down, Justin, if you could maybe, I'll follow up with an email to the superintendent, but I think we need to have more information on that, as well as some more information on, from looking at the minutes. We also discussed, you know, some concerns about legal bills and so forth. And, you know, once again, I was hoping that tonight we would be setting aside some time to discuss those things.
I think it's our plan to have a meeting sometime in the beginning of December to go over outstanding issues, especially with the construction issues going on also, so...
Well, I'm concerned, I'll raise my concern on television, Mrs. Robin, that, you know, I'm concerned that we were not informed that the superintendent would be out of town. And I am concerned about that. I'm concerned, and that shows that there's a, there's an issue there that's underneath all of this, and it's the communications between the chairman, the vice chair, and the rest of the committee. And this is, we've been very much out of the loop and, and a lot of, a lot of issues that are going on, and I know we've been, we've hit some health issues, not health issues, issues with weather and so forth, but, you know, these, these days just keep flying by. And really, there's not an awful lot of communications from the committee as a whole or from the leadership. And I'm just wondering what you're going to do about that.
I do apologize. I take responsibility for, for not notifying. The chair and I were aware of the superintendent being away. We had kind of talked about it, looked at what was coming up on the agenda. There wasn't a whole lot. And so we said, let's just go forward with the meeting because it's getting to a holiday time and it was a tight, tight schedule.
Well, now we're faced with the fact that we really didn't do much tonight, and now the next regular meeting is the 13th of December. My concern is also, as I've stated before, we're on TV, is that the entire committee needs to know.
Absolutely.
Not just the chair and the vice chair. Not just the chair and the vice chair, and it's really not your decision, it's the committee collectively. And in the past, if we had had problems, certainly we've had superintendents that have had to leave early, or that have had to, that had vacations and so forth, and we accommodated them by moving the, moving the meeting to an appropriate night. Thank God, it was really a very light evening, and there's really nothing happened this week to cause folks to be, shall we say, lining up at our door, but, you know, we need to know.
You're right.
And we need to know from her, and I'll bring it up with her, we need to know, we need a, you know, a chain of command, whether it's going to be Justin, that's fine, if it's the sped director, whoever it might be, but someone that's kind of, you know, watching over things, or that can at least, if something does happen, you know, we can go to and say, okay, this, this is what we're hearing, this is what's going on, do you know anything about that? So, once again, I was very disappointed in that, and I, and I just want to, you know, understand that, and I think most of the committee members feel the same way, so thank you.
All right, anyone else on the committee forum? I just want to bring up that we do have the evaluation training on November 26 to go over the new administrative evaluation system by the MASC is coming in to do that for us, and we'll make sure that we, I believe we're going to have it here, but we'll get the times out and time range too, so you know how long you're going to be here.
Trying to set it by meeting in Millville the same night.
Yeah, Millville requested us to meet at Millville Elementary.
To go over some of the facilities. I think, I think Millville was 6:30, and what, we can do both, as long as we coordinate the times, I think.
So maybe we could meet?
Let me find out about that. I wasn't aware of that, so.
Is anyone coming in for that training with us? I know you were talking about opening it.
I don't believe we've sent it out to anybody, so.
So maybe we could schedule.
They may want to see how long that's going to take, because that's, that could be a, a Millville situation could take a little bit of time.
They want to show us some things about cafeteria floors and some other things.
Okay. I will check out that. All right. That is the end of the agenda, and I would be looking for a motion for adjournment.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Mrs. Vinoco, seconded by Mr. Buckley. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?